This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our regular session of school committee meeting this evening, Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. We want to make a couple quick notes. We are officially called to order now. One of our members is feeling a little under the weather. She is joining us remotely. Good evening, Linda Markey. So you in the public might note that all of the votes we'll be taking tonight will be roll call votes so that Linda will have an opportunity to vote. This is something that's required when we have a mix of in-person and remote members who are voting. Secondly, I had a conversation today and am expecting written receipt later this evening of a notice of resignation of our member Ben Hershey. I would just want to take a moment to thank Ben for his years of dedicated service. Their personal family circumstances have changed, and Ben has decided to step aside and make room for a member who has a different focus at this moment. We will verify with city authorities, but it is our understanding that because there were multiple candidates in the election a year and a half ago, that the any vacancy that happened more than 90 days before the next election, which would be this November, so we are still within that window, would go to the next highest vote getter, which we believe to be Timothy St. John. All of that, of course, as I said, will have to be verified by city authorities. We take a moment to remember that Barbara Bumbarista-Holker is working with us, so we are going to verify with a couple of sources just to be sure that we're doing everything entirely appropriately, so stay tuned for that. Do we have to change this? Maybe we don't. That's fine.
Oh, because it turned to me. Yeah, I'll work on that.
That's fine. All right. So with that, we are going to move ahead to we're going to go ahead to announcements and begin with gifts.
I am not aware of any gifts.
Okay. And the next category is correspondence. We did receive one item of correspondence. It was a letter from the EEA, which is the East Hampton Education Association, that is more commonly known as our teacher and support staff unions. It was regarding some comments made by one of our members on a private Facebook post that was critical of their child's experience with their teachers at one of our district schools. The EEA took issue with that and requested that said post be removed. I don't want to get too deeply into the weeds with this, but I will just say that while I can understand the frustration of faculty and staff seeing or being made aware of criticism of their work, that it is not under our purview to censor or restrict the private comments made by any citizen, including one of our members. And we certainly look forward to any opportunity if someone has criticism to offer. Everything short of defamation, slander, or libel should be an invitation for a conversation and a teachable moment for us to talk about, you know, where is where is there room for compromise, further discussion, and in what ways can we improve while still be supportive of our teachers and staff as well as our elected officials? So we're going to move on to the student representative update. Walter, are you here for Asta?
No.
No. Is Asta joining us remotely tonight? Or Asta is a senior, I believe, and Asta is going to be going through it, so she may not have had time in her calendar to join us this evening. Do we know anything about that, Maureen?
Through the chair, I believe that Asta was coming tonight.
Okay. If she arrives later, we can just kick back to her then.
And Kenzie is the new representative, so came tonight just to say that he's going to be taking over. I mean, Walter came tonight. Walter?
Well, Walter, no, 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 no. I don't think that's correct. So Kenzie Askew is from Mountain View. Walter's a sophomore at the high school. So Walter, what do you have to share with us tonight, just so I don't keep dragging you up here?
I think he's the replacement.
We're having some trouble with the muting.
Hmm. What's happening?
I doubt that this is what we wanted.
What?
Sorry, we're trying to get a tech issue. I'm so sorry.
That's a separate thing. So Walter, were you here for a student update or for something else?
I don't really know.
Okay.
I was told that-
I was told to be here at 5:40.
Walter, are you the new student representative for next year?
Yeah, I will be.
Yes.
Excellent. So Walter, why don't you come to the podium? Walter is something of a celebrity in our little-
No one can hear us.
What?
Hold on just one moment, because nobody can hear.
That's no good.
I know.
Julia said that she can't hear us. There's no audio.
No.
Um, that's a great question. Try it. Maybe if it's, can I, okay, I'm relying on a message. We're all blurry. Is it all blurry at home, too? This is just what we're dealing with tonight. Hopefully, I don't hear any feedback, so hopefully this is, okay, so what about? I think we're good.
Are you good?
I think we're good. I have received a message that it gets super blurry and but this is, yeah, so you just have the idea of what of what we look like, but you can hear us.
Okay. So here's what we're going to do.
Sorry about that.
It is 6:09. You can have a seat for a second, Walter. We're going to have to start over because nobody has heard anything we've said to this point. Okay.
Sorry about that, Austin.
So to those joining us, many of you have probably been watching. So we're going to start over because you couldn't hear anything that was just said. So we did call the meeting to order. I noted that we have two absences. Linda Markey, one of our members, is not feeling well but still wanted to participate. She is joining us remotely. People, members of the public will note that all of the votes that we take this evening will be roll call votes so that Linda will have the ability to vote. This is a state requirement if we have a mix of members in person and joining remotely. Secondly, our member Ben Hershey notified me in a telephone call this afternoon that he has chosen to step down. He will be resigning as of this evening. So I want to thank Ben for his years of service to the city. Due to a change in his personal family circumstances, they are shifting their priorities to their child and in other arenas, and Ben felt it was in his and the city's best interest to leave some space for another member. I had mentioned when we were all muted that it is our understanding, the way this process will unfold, because there were multiple other candidates in the last election a year and a half ago, that in the event of a vacancy that would happen prior to 90 days before that election, that rather than an appointment, that vacancy would be offered to the next highest vote getter, who would be Timothy St. John. So I'll be reaching out to Mr. St. John immediately to get a feel for whether or not he is interested and to confirm with city authorities that that is in fact the proper procedure. We will make updates available by our June meeting, but if you see a new face at the June meeting, that would be a back story. So with that, we're going to start with announcements. Megan, I'm going to take the lead. We had one item of correspondence, which is a letter from the EEA, that is the East Hampton Education Association, known more colloquially as our teacher and support staff union. They were writing in regards to a post that one of our members made on his private Facebook page that was critical of his child's experience with and at one of our district schools, and that has prompted their decision to choice him into another district. The EEA took issue with the comments made by that member and made a request of myself and the committee to remove that post. So again, what I had said earlier is I don't want to get too deeply in the weeds, but I want to honor this request made by the EEA and also honor the support that it is my job to offer the support to my members. So here's what I will say on this topic, that it is not within our purview to censor or restrict the comments of other members, that we are all free to share and receive criticism, and I would hope that we could take it as an opportunity to have a further conversation about what we're doing right and how we can improve. I certainly can sympathize with teachers who are doing difficult work in difficult times and who will be really hurt by the receipt of criticism. Certainly, myself and my fellow members can understand, we've been in similar position multiple times in our tenure in public office. So I think if there are further questions, I would invite further conversation either privately or publicly with the EEA and their leadership, and I hope that they feel satisfied with us allowing them an opportunity to air those grievances. So moving on to gifts, I think Megan said that we had none. And so the next item on the agenda is our student representative update. Our current East Hampton High School representative, Asta Patel, is a senior who is set to graduate in a hot minute and I'm sure is extremely busy, but we are joined tonight by Monsieur Walter Baker, who I am told will be our student representative for the upcoming school year. So go ahead to the podium, and why don't you introduce yourself, Walter, to the five people who don't know who you are in this city?
Hi, everyone. My name is Walter Baker, and I will be a junior at East Hampton High School in the fall and serving as the East Hampton High School Student Council President. So I'm excited to be representing the student body to our school committee.
Congratulations. You're a rising junior and student council president.
Yes. That's right.
La di da. Congratulations, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
You're welcome. May I ask, maybe I'm picking a scab, how did it go at WMASC in those elections?
What?
Okay.
I'm excited.
So, so there was three candidates.
There were three candidates.
I'm going to, I'm very confident that I came in second, okay? Very, very confident, okay? I heard from a lot of advisors from Frontier and Mahar that-
You had a lot of support.
They weren't feeling it. Yeah.
All right. Well, a well-run race is a lesson in itself. Congratulations to you. And I mean, running for WMASC, which is our regional board that reports to our state board, is a big deal. And I'll tell you what, Walter, I only made it on the state board because there weren't a lot of Western Mass candidates at the time. Big fish, little pond. You're in a bigger pond now.
Well, I'll tell you that I plan to run for state vice president in March.
Do it.
Get it.
That's amazing.
Excellent. It's always a crapshoot because a bunch of kids are going to pick one office to all run. There will be one candidate for president, one for secretary, seven for VP.
Right.
Yeah. Best of luck.
Thank you.
We look forward to your illustrious updates every month beginning August. Do you want to come in in August, our August meeting?
I could.
If not, we'll see you in September.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a sparkling summer, Walter.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Walter.
We also do have a Mountain View representative, Kenzie Askew, who I don't believe is with us tonight. Again, May is bananas, so we give all the grace to everyone. We hope Kenzie is doing really well, and we look forward to hearing Mountain View updates in the near future. And we are going to move on to public comment. We don't have anyone joining us in person, but if anyone joining us remotely has comments they would like to share, just please raise your virtual hand. We'll take note of that. Give you an opportunity to speak. Give that just a minute in case someone is stealing themselves. Megan, you don't see anything, do you?
I don't see anything.
Give that five, four. All right. We are going to move on. Out of our Director of Business Services, Julia Sari Franks, is out of town this evening at a professional conference. So in an attempt to try to accommodate Julia and our gratitude for her joining us, even though she is juggling a lot of balls right now, we're going to move her ahead and ask her to offer the business update, the finance and personnel reports at this point. Are you, are you ready to go, Julia? Hello?
Are we able to? Something's funny tonight with this.
Yeah, there's something weird with tech tonight.
I want to call on you. How shall we call on you? Can I make her a co-host?
Can you?
Where's all my options? Oh, boy.
I see Julia's raised hand. We are trying to figure out why this is not.
I'm going to have like a option to make somebody-
No.
Maybe when-
That's weird.
She's down here. Hold on. This could be a-
Maybe.
Ah.
You got it? Try it again, Julia.
Oh, gee. Oh, no. Okay, hold on.
Well, we can hear-
That's an interesting tunnel effect.
Good evening, Julia. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. Thank you for bearing with us tech issues, if you can believe that.
Absolutely.
All right. So we are ready for the business update.
At this time, 76.77% of the appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. This is similar to where it's been at this point in the year, the couple of prior fiscal years, so not concerns about that outside of the issues that we have already talked about. Second item on the report is the financial audit. The audit firm of Scanlon and Associates have completed the end-of-year report audit. Their audit report has been sent into DESI. A copy of that report was provided to the school committee. They did identify one item which resulted in an amendment being filed through the end-of-year report. It just changed the line item where something was reported. It wasn't a material change to the content of the submission, but again, a copy of the auditor's report has been provided to the school committee. The next item on the report is that, as we've been talking about, we anticipate there being a budget shortfall for the current fiscal year for FY25 in the amount of around $1 million, depending on what happens with the remainder of the fiscal year. We have about seven weeks left of the fiscal year, and we're watching numbers very carefully. I am recommending that a supplemental appropriation request be submitted to the city council in the amount of $650,000. If secured, the appropriation will be used to cover unanticipated deficits in the current fiscal year budget related to the additional costs of settling collective bargaining agreements during FY25, as well as unanticipated special education expenses for out-of-district tuition and specialized transportation. And the last item on the report is the personnel report for April. It is included for your reference.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Julia? Because otherwise, I want to be mindful of her time and let her, I know she has an evening appointment at this conference. Thank you very much, Julia. We are going to vote on that motion this evening, and I'll text you the update.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. So Superintendent Bonetta, we're going to move to your update, and then I think right after yours, we could do the vote for that appropriation request? Okay, great.
Through the chair. So every year, you have to do a school choice vote of the school committee. Then also this year, the state, after you do the vote tonight, the state sent us a survey that has to be sent out. So we'll be sending that out as soon as tomorrow so that we can get the information the state needs. So every year, we look at our numbers in our classrooms, and we decide how many openings we have in each grade level. So for next year, we have two openings in kindergarten. We have two openings in grade one.
And then that's it until we get to the high school, right?
And that's it until we get to the high school, yeah. And, you know, as you know, with the budget, you know, sometimes we have to close a classroom. So if you close a classroom and you consolidate teachers, then your chances of opening those spots for school choice are affected.
Right. And we have to be mindful, too. Like, if there is one or two, if there's a one or two-seat wiggle room in, let's say, grades three through eight, people move throughout the school year. There has to be some room for kids to like shift around and enter their community.
That's right. Depending upon. But right now, this is what we have to publish.
Yes.
This is what's open. So for grade nine, we have six openings. For grade 10, we have three. For grade 11, we have three, and we have five for grade 12.
Okay. Can I ask one question that just goes into our life skills program that will be kicking off again next year at the high school? If we had out-of-district students who are interested in entering that program, their parents should reference, given whatever grade level their student is at, nine through 12, they would look at one of those slots, and they could potentially take one of those slots at the high school level to enroll in that life skills program.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a brand-new life skills program. It's opening up this August. Teachers already been hired.
It would have to be written in a child's IEP that they require that level of service.
Right. And that, that person would actually be tuitioning in, not necessarily school choice. So you can also tuition in to the special ed program with an IEP.
Okay. That was my question, is do they have to be mindful of those slots or are there other avenues for admission?
Okay. For the life skills program.
Great.
So you can do, so to clarify, you could do either. You can either, if you, if your district agrees on a placement in our program through the IEP, that's one way of doing it, or you can enter the school choice lottery, and, and then if your child is picked, then we are able to implement their IEP here.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. Very excited about that. So I would entertain a motion to approve the school choice slots as delineated by Superintendent Bonetta?
So moved.
Thank you. May I, second?
Second.
Megan, are you taking?
Yes, I am.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so we are going to roll call every vote. Linda, I'm going to begin with you, and you can either unmute or raise your hand. Linda Markey? Can we unmute? I can't.
Oh.
No.
Oh, gosh. This is so, oh, she has a host. Okay.
Do you want to do the room first and then-
Yeah, we're going to do that. Okay, so Linda, we'll circle back to Eric.
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura Scott, I. Linda Markey? I'm going to mark Linda as an extension because the technology is not allowing us to recognize her vote. So motion carries. Thank you all. And the second topic would be the supplemental appropriation request. So that document you all could have received and reviewed in your packet. Essentially, we have a $650,000 budget shortfall this year. I believe we've discussed this at length in prior meetings, but I just want to get the public up to speed once again. So the way, I think the most kind of pedestrian accessible way to describe this for the public who isn't really versed in the complications of school finance, is that we had kind of two buckets of complication this school year. The first bucket were some unforeseen cost explosions, and that fell under two umbrellas. Some were special education services and some were transportation, including transportation for some of our most vulnerable students. Those costs exploded in a way that we could not have predicted. And at the same time as that, we had, we were finally able to reach an agreement with our teacher and support staff unions for a three-year contract with significant pay increases to provide more equity and support for the, for the important work that they do. So we probably could have withstood that cost increase or the unexpected cost increase that I'd referenced earlier. It was a bridge too far for this small district to absorb both in the same fiscal year, and so we find ourselves in this position. So I want to reassure the public, this is not an issue of money mismanagement. This was not an issue of, you know, people working for us in a professional capacity, not doing their jobs to the best of their ability. They absolutely were. These are just incredibly trying financial times. I'm sure you all see the headlines in the paper of layoffs and difficulties in all of our neighboring communities. So lucky for us, we've been able to avoid those drastic measures, but in order to maintain the quality of education that we offer and we find so important in East Hampton, we're going to require about $650,000 to cure this fiscal budget, which closes at the end of June. So that is the long story short there. Does anybody have any questions on that before I call for a motion?
So I have a question. I just want to clarify. I heard earlier that there was a deficit of about $1 million, and our request is for $650,000, so I'm just kind of wondering about the difference in those numbers.
Let me start, and then more room will fill in the gaps. So I think when we, prior to Julia Sari Franks joining us, we had heard some commotion about this from our prior Director of Business Services, Nick Bernier, and what Nick was saying at that point was trying to predict. He could see we were going to have some level of a shortfall, and it was going to be somewhere between half a million and 1.1, depending on a variety of factors. And I think that 650 is about the conservative place where we land after we have drawn from a bunch of reserve funds. Is that your understanding, Maureen?
Yeah, that, that's true. So we could use, we figured out that we would use some of the school choice funds, but you can't use all of it because you want to be able to have some for next year. And then the special ed circuit breaker, we, we applied for extraordinary relief. We did receive that last year.
It's just a prepayment. It is not additional funds being awarded to the district. It's just basically an advance on some of that special education reimbursement.
And we did not, we weren't eligible for it because you have to get 15% over what you had applied for last year. It's very rare that a district will get that two years in a row next year. That might be something that we might be applying for, but when you get your circuit breaker money, it's actually next year's money that you get ahead of time. So if you use all of that, then next year, you won't have that funding. So we applied some of the circuit breaker money, and we also applied the school choice money, and that's how we got down to the 650,000.
Okay. And does the, does the recent increase in the circuit breaker funding for next fiscal year that's in the budget, in the House budget, or?
That is a great question.
Does that affect that at all?
So yes, that would. So if that extra money was given to us, we would use more of the circuit breaker money on this, and obviously then we would return that extra funding to the city.
So there is a chance, too, just because we don't, and, and the problem is like we never know really what's up with the circuit breaker until after the budget.
Right. And we are not allowed to run a budget out of deficit. We are required by law to close out a balance book at the end of June.
Yes. And these are services that we are required by law to provide.
Absolutely.
So.
Right. Out-of-district placements.
Yep.
Right. And I mean, just for those watching, if you, if you tune into school committee, perhaps you turn into city council, it is not an uncommon event, particularly in a year where contract negotiations have been settled, you know, because you're planning your budget in advance while those negotiations are ongoing. You can't predict, nor are you legally allowed to budget for something you haven't signed and had agreed by the union in question. So there are often times where you have to go back, once you're able to come to an agreement on those contracts, you then have to go back to the city to explain, you know, here's how we value this work, here's the reasonable agreement that we have made with the parties concerned, here are the funds that are going to be required to make that balanced. So that is where we find ourselves, just like every other department. So I would entertain a motion for the school committee to approve the supplemental appropriation request for FY 2025 in the amount of $650,000 and zero cents.
Can I just ask one question before that?
Can you say so moved, and then we can do questions for vote?
So moved.
So moved. Can I get a second?
I'm going to be abstaining.
Yeah, abstain. Nope. Second. Wow. Second.
Thank you. I need Linda to vote. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
If we, so obviously, because I've proposed the motion, I'm in favor of this, if, if the city is not able to grant us this appropriation, kind of what are the next steps after that?
Not good. Maureen, would you like to get to the details?
Well, actually, by law, the city actually has to help us close the budget, so we, we would obviously go back and ask the city to do that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were clear on-
I mean, we're fortunate. We have a very congenial, professional, working relationship. So what will happen to the public? The way that our city charter is written, it's a home rule city charter, it affords an enormous amount of authority, particularly fiscal authority, to the mayor, and then the city council is meant to be more of a check balance to the mayor's power, not an authority in and of itself. So the way this process works is the school committee will or won't approve this request. If it's approved, that will be sent to the mayor's office. The mayor can choose to either send that forward to the city council or not. I have every reason to believe that the mayor will forward it to the city council, where the city council will then take it under advisement, and the mayor will have an opportunity at that point as well to offer their feedback on whether or not this is necessary warranted and what impact it will have on the city finances as a larger piece. So this is just step one in a kind of multi-step process to make sure that, you know, we're not causing any harm to other departments or to the city as a whole, but we're also protecting the fidelity of this school department.
Sounds good.
Okay. Linda, can I check in with you one more time? Are you able to say anything or raise your hand for this vote?
I'll call her phone.
You want to call her phone? Yeah.
Because I need her for the work.
Because we need to.
That's okay. Don't apologize.
I can't. She says she can't unmute.
Okay. Can she just message you then?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. So we are going to roll call. We have a vote on the floor to approve the supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $650,000. We are going to roll call vote. Linda, I'll begin with you. I would take either a message, a raised hand, or a yay or nay?
You can unmute now.
Or a raised hand, or a message in the chat?
Yay.
Yay. Thank you, Linda. Yea, thank you, Linda. Eric?
Abstain.
Abstain. Megan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura Scott, yes. The request is approved. So as I said, Julia and Maureen will sign off on this and send it to the mayor's office, who will also sign off on this, who will send it to the City Council. And then they will have eventually a public hearing, likely in very early June. Thank you so much, Linda, yeah, we're all set, we got it. Next on the agenda.
Then we have the Parent Square with Jean Libby. It was on the superintendent's.
It's not on my agenda. Okay, so.
Parent Square.
Oh, yeah, Parent Square, yep.
Okay, so if you're ready for it. Is Jean able to talk?
Yes.
Okay, so next on the agenda is, can you, oh, roll out the intro for this for me, Megan, for Jean?
Ooh, can I?
Thank you so much.
Um, this is a new, Jean is cringing while I'm watching this. This is a new communication coordination software that is, was being piloted and is proving to be incredibly useful. And I.
Meant to replace kind of the melange we have, like Remind and?
Please, please save me, please.
Okay, so we have Jean Libby, whose role in the district is our family outreach coordinator. Could you name Jean?
Hi, can you all see me and your meal thing?
Yes.
Great. I'm gonna apologize in advance, I'm home with my toddler, so she is interrupting.
We're hoping that she comes in.
So yes, I'm Jean Libby, I'm the family engagement coordinator for the school district. And I've been working, you know, alongside all of our school partners for a while on a bunch of different things. But I've been, you know, part of the Equity Committee for a number of years. I've, in my role, onboard new families, hear from families, supporting current families with anything that they might need in terms of like connecting to the schools or figuring out who to ask their questions to, things like that. I also manage the social media and our school website, for better or for worse. And all of those things, what they have in common is that I have heard from and have been part of communicating on behalf of the district and for families for a number of years. We've used Remind as our primary, one of our primary sources of communication between families and their teachers. And we're very excited, I'm very excited, to be able to say that we are moving forward with moving over to Parent Square. Which, if you're not familiar with Parent Square, it is, it recently acquired Remind as a company. So everything that we've used Remind for will still be in place. Parent Square is sort of an all-in-one communication tool that many districts are using to really facilitate that family engagement that we've been hard pressed, not hard pressed, but like it's, it's hard to do, really good family engagement consistently across all grades and across all classrooms. And Parent Square is gonna allow us to do that. So I just, I asked if I could make the announcement now as like sort of just a preemptive, keep your eyes peeled, we're gonna be rolling out a little bit this spring. We'll be sending out messages to our staff and families and starting to get them registered with Parent Square. It is an app-based program. Families can also choose to use it on their laptop if that's their preference. And then we are gonna hopefully go for a full rollout in September with the new school year. There will be many, many opportunities to be able to share about what it is and help families get onboard, figure out the usability of it. And I will also be working to support our tech department, as well as our teachers and staff in rolling it out. Can y'all still hear me okay?
Yes.
Can.
All right, I want to get a little fancy, is it possible to share my?
It should be.
Screen?
That means very little, but it should be.
You have a, you have host status, so you should be able to, why don't you see if you can? No. The tech has been really.
Oh, wait, I present.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Hold on. I'm like so familiar with Zoom, I just haven't.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
If that's what the problem is, it'll be fine.
Did we just lose her?
It looks like we might have.
I think we lost.
Yes.
Oh, shoot.
Hi, Linda.
But we got Linda.
Oh, my gosh. The agita created by this tech.
I just, yes, I know we say this every time, but just so people are aware, truly at least one minor thing changes in the tech setup.
Every week.
So it's not that we don't, can't learn things.
No, okay, no. All right, so here's what we're gonna do.
She's back.
Jean's back, okay. I can't hear you, Jean, hold on one sec.
She's a host.
Oh, there we go, I'm so embarrassed, I'm sorry, that did not work at all. You know, I'm gonna not risk getting myself kicked off again and I'll just, I can email this little, it's just a little promo video about Parents Square. It's like nothing except a little overview. Stuff like that will be going around all over the place very soon, so.
You know what?
Take my word for it and let me tell you, it's an excellent thing.
Jean, we will, while, we'll prepare to have it ready to go, perhaps for the August meeting as people are kind of refocusing, so we will get it, we'll make sure to get that out there in August. And then certainly, people will see it all over the place by September.
Yes.
Do you have a comment?
That's so great. And if I can make one ask to the School Committee is that, for those of you and for the public that is on this call, it would be great to have a couple of cheerleaders of sort to kind of help get onboard with Parents Square. Of course, you know, with any communication or with any change comes a little bit of hesitancy and nervousness. So I would ask the School Committee to like do a little searching around the, I'll send some of the information about Parents Square, familiarize yourself with what it can do. It's really gonna be a revolutionary tool that we can use to enhance our family communications and our engagement with our families, allowing them to better support their students throughout their time at East Hampton Public Schools.
So Jean, you'd mentioned it was an app, so I assume parents could probably go ahead and download the app now. But, and then what would be required once they start and once they're re-enrolled in the fall and we start kicking off the actual use, they'll probably get a classroom code or a school code or something to connect them.
Yes, so every parent is gonna receive an emailed invitation, which is like an invitation to register. And with that registration, once you get that registration, your student will automatically be kind of linked to your application. So your student information should pre-populate. Once we get all of the rostering done, usually over the summer, that means like which teachers are assigned to teach which students, you'll get an automatic notification like who you're gonna be communicating with that year. One of the biggest benefits of this program is that you can have posts internally. So think of like all of the social media posts that we've been trying to put out. It's really hard to post, you know, updates that are happening within the school because we're very sensitive to student privacy. But this is an internal application where you would just be sending messages to your classroom as a teacher. And the parents aren't making posts the same way like on social media or something. It's just gonna be really good and it's very intuitive. It's not, it won't even require too much like typing in a code and knowing which class code and everything like that, it'll be simpler than that.
I just downloaded it, Jean, yeah.
Yeah, I did too.
I already see my kid's name on it, so.
Oh.
Yay.
Sam and then Megan.
That's awesome.
I just wanted to, I think this sounds great and I'm excited to be a cheerleader for it, I hope. One thing I would suggest, I know that the library has, first of all, our local library is open until 8:00 PM on Sundays and 6:00 PM on other days. So it's open like well after the end of the school day. And so I'm wondering if maybe we could work with their staff on making, on kind of teaching them how to help people access this.
It's a great idea.
So that we have another point of kind of tech support for if people need help kind of figuring out how to get on.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Sam. I think that is definitely something that we could do, even sort of mirroring different drop-in hours like you all have sometimes at the library or different places. Like that's something that I could do in person, go to the library after hours and help families. We'll have lots of opportunities to get, like the whole school's trainings done and people will have lots of opportunities to ask questions, but that's a great idea. I'm friends with the people at the library, I'm sure they'd love to do that.
Awesome, I've just volunteered them for this, knowing that they'll probably be fine.
They love it, yeah.
Oh, they will. The other, one more other thing that I think is a really exciting feature, and then that's it. I don't have much more to say, but there's a calendaring app, or like a calendar portion of it, so that in one place you'll be able to open the app and see all of the upcoming events, when MCAS is gonna be, when there's dismissals, things like that. So you won't have to look in a hundred different places for that sort of information.
That's great. I have a quick question, can I ask?
Yeah.
Did you say, I might have been typing that you were, in the minutes that you were starting to speak, did you say that educators had a chance to try it?
Our administrators have seen it. And the educators haven't yet gotten the training or the invite. This is like hot off the press news, we just signed the contract a couple of weeks ago, so.
Nice.
We're gonna be sending it out to staff first, so that they can all get a look at it with the expectation and understanding that they don't have to do anything yet. Just sort of know that it's coming, that's why I wanted to talk to them.
Just get the first crown. Makes sense, that's great. It's, I've also signed in and this is, my kids are already in it, like this is pretty.
Yeah, I've verified all this thing quickly.
So yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say to parents, if you're interested, go ahead and download that app and there's like, there's a couple of steps of like verification for your phone and your, so get that all done now and then you'll start seeing things roll out into August and September. Go ahead, Maureen.
I threw the chair, also, it translates automatically into languages, so that's right, Jean, another strong part of Parent Square. And I know that a lot of parents didn't like that they had difficulty opening up the emails that came from the principals. There's no more difficulty doing that. And we won't be using School Messenger anymore eventually. So the snow day announcements, everything comes through there, as well as eventually all the forms that any parent needs to fill out for field trips or anything, everything will be on this one app. So it's one place to go, you fill it out, goes right where it needs to go. It's really, it's really, it's really amazing what they've developed.
That's amazing.
Yeah. In addition to the language translation, it's also fully ADA compliant. They've done all of the work already, the developers have to meet all the ADA compliance. So it's screen reader compatible, the contrast on the thing like you're, I was playing around with some of the settings and it won't even let you set something that doesn't meet the ADA compliance standard, so that's really nice. It's just, it's pretty exciting.
Great. Little things that make a big difference, right, Jean?
Yeah.
It's gonna be huge, yeah. A few years from now, we're gonna look back and wonder how we ever did it differently.
All right, great, and does anybody else have questions? For Jean? Yes. No more, for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you everybody, thanks for letting me join in for a few.
I tried to drag this out so we could see your toddler and it didn't work.
I know.
She's so quiet, I don't want to interrupt, she's doing a puzzle. I mean, not a puzzle, but you know.
Yeah.
Playing with puzzle pieces. Thank you.
Bye. All right, so next up, we have a School Committee discussion. We're gonna start with a policy subcommittee update, Sam?
We had a great policy subcommittee meeting. We, Julianne Levin, our curriculum director in the district, has proposed a policy for use of generative artificial intelligence in our district, otherwise known as Gen AI. This is a pretty big deal, this is not an area that many districts in our state have policies on, although that is, it is growing. There's currently nothing kind of super concrete from MASC either, so we're gonna be kind of one of the first districts to have one of these policies. So we went through it, we gave some feedback. Julianne and I are gonna meet and just change a couple of small things, mainly just kind of clarifying who is responsible for what. But I really, I enjoyed kind of working through it with everybody. Do you want me to summarize a little bit of what it is?
Could we hit that? I would love to dedicate more time to it when we're ready for first reading.
I would prefer that too, yeah.
Okay.
I think that'd be good. But for anybody in the public who's interested, it's all up, it's part of our agenda, like it's on our, it's on the website. Or if that's hard to find or you can't get it for some reason, you can just email me and I will send it to you.
Perfect.
But it's, yeah, it's exciting and I really appreciated just how kind of nuanced and thoughtful the discussion has been. It's not neither a kind of free-for-all, we all love AI, we're gonna use it for everything, or a like hands-off or not touching it. You know, we're really like kind of considering the many ways that this technology is becoming a part of our lives and will continue to become a part of our lives, so.
All things in moderation.
All things in moderation.
Thank you so much.
That's the policy.
Great.
Can I ask for clarification, this is a new policy on AI.
This is a new policy on AI, yeah. Generative AI in particular.
Yikes. Okay, as somebody who has a multitude of tech issues just trying to run Google meets, I really look forward to this next set of challenges.
Yep, yep.
Excellent, Finance Subcommittee, Megan?
Yes, that is me, okay. What do I have for an update? We have not met, although we had discussed since our last meeting. We discussed in our last meeting the appropriation and the need for it. And we have an upcoming meeting on Monday.
The 19th?
Thank you, Monday, the 19th at 4:30. And the City Council Finance Committee meeting about the Education Department is directly afterwards at 5:30. So anyone who's interested in a deep dive.
Nice marathon meeting for us finance folks.
Yeah, so that, we'll meet first and then we'll adjourn and then they will start and we'll be there to answer questions.
Wonderful.
And that's all I got, yeah.
Yeah, it's the handful of months in the year where finance isn't totally bananas. We're gonna have a CES update and then I'm gonna swing back to you, Megan.
Yeah.
Do we have anything going on CES?
So, do we have anything going on at CES?
Since last time, anything new since last?
CES, just to remind everybody, this is the Collaborative for Educational Services. This is the education collaborative that we're a member of, they're located in Northampton and they are a giant sprawling nonprofit that offers a number of different services, some of which are kind of part of our membership and some of which are from other agencies. There's been, you know, some real concerns around kind of the financial outlook for the agency. There are definitely some challenges with morale right now as there have been a lot of layoffs and they were not communicated super well. And I attended a listening session with the, with the staff and the leadership a couple of nights ago. And I would really like to, you know, we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, but I would really like to spend some time at some point, maybe not tonight. I would like to just kind of come up with some of our needs as a district that the collaborative might be able to address because one of the things that I'm noticing is just like, most collaboratives, you know, they operate essentially special education schools. And the collaborative does have a special education school and then they also have the Mount Tom Academy and we use both, but we also use other special education schools in the area for different needs. We use Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative for certain things. And then we have other, you know, kind of as we're talking about this appropriation, we have these out-of-district, or these out-of-district placements, tuitions. We occasionally have residential placements come up that are very expensive. We also have challenges around special transportation. And none of those are really areas that our current collaborative is addressing. And the collaboratives were developed to address kind of extraordinary special education costs, especially for small districts. So I would like to, at some point, kind of figure out kind of what we are looking for and then I would also, I would like to kind of, and I've been doing this a little bit, like I've been talking to other board members from other districts, just kind of about what their districts are facing. And are there other things that we could be doing together through the collaborative that would help the collaboratives kind of improve their financial outlook, but then also like provide more of the services to our districts that we really need right now? One example that I thought of that seems to be resonating is, you know, right now it's really hard and partially because of the way. and partially because of um the way that it's hard to predict special education costs. It's been really challenging to provide like electives for middle schoolers, particularly in our district, but also in other districts. Um, and you know, one thing we were, we were thinking about was, you know, could we like have,
Share the cost and stuff.
Work with the collaborative to share the cost and maybe like in the springtime, East Hampton gets the French teacher and then in the, you know, in the, in the fall, we get the cooking teacher, you know, like and we, we give the kids an opportunity to try some new things, we move the staff around different districts and then we're not responsible. So like, that's, that's different, because historically, it's always been like direct special education services uh that we get from the collaborative. This would be like, this would be kind of addressing other um, other things that we either can't afford or that um are not, we're not able to sustain from year to year, partially because we can't really predict our special education expenditures. So I I just think there's like room to kind of rethink what a collaborative does and rethink like kind of what our relationship to the collaborative is and um I don't know how to do, like I don't know what format to have that conversation, but I think we need to do.
Let me steer this, because I, I could, no. I agree and we've had many conversations. Here's the two things I'm kind of bearing in mind.
Yeah.
Is one is the money, it is May heading into June, so the district money, state money, neighboring communities money, all of that is in question. So that conversation is probably a bit more useful and on the nose after August, September, when there's some finalization. Additionally, we are heading into the last six months of our two-year term. So what I'm thinking might be helpful is for somewhere between August and October to have a work session or a meeting to lay out.
Yeah.
A basic sketch, a timeline, a template to offer to the next full school committee. Perhaps some of us will be participating in that, but at least there will be a document that survives this specific committee that can be kind of used to move that all forward.
I think that'd be great.
So I've made a note that like to bring it, we'll plug it in there somewhere between August and September, depending on kind of what the finances look like, and at the very least, just get something down.
Yeah, um and I'd like to, you know, and I've I've seen in other, in other districts and to some extent historically in our district, although I think this is more, a more pressing issue in other communities right now, just, I I think sometimes we look at special education expenditures and we kind of end up inadvertently pitting special education costs against uh other things, foreign languages, electives, um sports, you know, that kind of stuff. And I just don't, I I, you know, as a parent of a kid with a disability, like I um, I I don't want families to feel like, you know, their kid is getting an education and then other families are losing things because of that. That's not like, not what we're trying to convey, so I think that's a great idea. I'd love to just kind of have a bigger, bigger picture, kind of envisioning like what, what we're looking for. Um, what do we really need right now in our district? And then like, and then let's go, you know, we can approach the collaborative and 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 Lower Pioneer Valley as well and kind of see what can we do here, like where can we kind of plug some of these?
I think there's a step in between that kind of addresses the specificity of issues of some of our neighboring communities who are having a hard time pulling together a level service budget for next year.
Yeah.
Because they are really hesitant to sacrifice some of the um supplemental educational services that they offer, because that is a real big attractor for their population.
It's, it's, yeah.
So if we can have those communications with neighboring communities.
Yep.
Let's say it's for example, middle school foreign language, if there was a way that they could still provide that, but offset some of the costs to try to get closer balancing their level service. So it feels like all of these things could actually work really well together if we can kind of take a leadership position and initiate those conversations.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna follow that.
Anything, we'll do anything to stretch a forty-five minute meeting out to that forty-four hour. You and I are here for it. Um, okay, one more update under school committee discussion that I'm gonna kick to Megan, who's been working tirelessly on our Mountain View playground, reimagining. How is that going, where are we at?
Um, I'm not working alone on it, I've had a lot of help from our committee that's amazing, who's um members of this committee, but also uh parents and a member of city council who have like stepped up and everyone is like doing tasks between meetings. It's really, it's like uh when you had a group project at school, but it went well.
Oh, I'm familiar with that.
I know, it's really cool. Um, so, and we've also um had support from our admin, both uh in central office and also at Mountain View and um at the city side from the planning department. So I had a meeting with them today and they're on board and they're gonna help out, so it's a, it's a large effort at this point. We are at the point where a survey is about to go out, I thought that was gonna be a quick process. Um, it turns out, it's not a quick process, partially because, and Jean is, if she's still on, is probably laughing at me and Maureen probably too, about the, the level of detail I put into.
Colored.
The color copies versus black and white copies, um the wording on, you know, all the things. Anyway, by the end of this week, you will um have received that survey in a variety of ways. Um, so we are looking forward to hearing from all students.
What's the deadline to respond to this?
The deadline to respond is Tuesday, May twenty-seventh.
Excellent, okay. So enough time for people to respond, but not so much that you set it aside because it's due in two months and then you forget all about it, which is what I always do.
Super quick.
Great.
Um, and it'll have a QR code and a link and um we've been calling this the playground committee, but I really wanna um stress from the committee that this is for all students at MVS. So we wanna hear from um middle school students, we wanna hear from our youngest students. Um, parents, please, or caregivers, please help um them take the survey. It's really quick, it'll take you five, six minutes maximum. Um, and tell us things that you are hoping to see, but also tell us the things that you love about the playground or the outdoor space, because we wanna make sure that we.
Protect and preserve what we're doing.
Exactly, so um, yeah, so. Thank you so much for that, Megan, yeah, of course.
Uh, so I did receive a phone call from the mayor today regarding the playground that's at Maple.
Right.
So.
Can we be specific, there are two playgrounds at Maple. So there was the little bitty pre-k playground and then there was the big.
All accessible.
Okay, so that was the former preschool playground. Relatively new, yes.
So um Larry, who is the facilities director, uh went over this morning for us to look at it, uh whether or not we can move it.
Cause that's what city council initially told the city.
Yes, and then um Jill, uh Baskin, Torture and myself went over today also to look at it and it's in great shape. And so we do think that it can be moved.
Ooh, okay.
And uh so now we were going to be getting some figures on what the cost would be. Um, but I spoke to the mayor again today and the mayor said that um the Department of Public Works uh would be willing to move it and set it up for free for us. So um it just really needs to be cleaned, but it's in great shape.
And so it's going to be relocated to the.
Mountain View.
Where at?
Uh, there's a spot that they, that they had there uh in the, kind of where the other playground is.
On the elementary side?
On the elementary side, uh that will fit in very nicely. And so I I didn't know if uh that you knew that, that it happened today.
Brand new information.
And it's um exciting.
Yeah, that's good.
And so, it's so accessible, it was actually made for that, there's a sign there that says it's all accessible playground, so uh now we're gonna make plans for what's the next step, how, you know, how's it get moved? Obviously, there's gonna be cement, you know, the cement, it's down there, really secure the foot, cement footings and have that done, so.
Great.
And it's, it's in great shape, so.
That's awesome, I'm really glad that was.
That can be another piece.
I don't like throwing anything away, so that makes my heart.
And I, and I wanna clarify to the public, that is a um, a great accessible playground for little children.
Yes, right, it was designed for preschool age kids.
For preschool age kids. So we are like, we're also working on improving the accessibility for the older kids, but that's great that we have that.
Yes.
Um, cause that was a significant investment too that we made in that, so I'm glad we've been able to move it.
Great though.
Thank you, that's great, that's really exciting.
Thank you.
All good things.
We have, did I say we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh?
The playground, ad hoc committee.
That's when the surveys do and the committee is meeting that night.
What day of the week is that?
That is a Tuesday night. I tried to schedule it for Memorial Day and was told by several people it's Memorial Day.
It's kind of sad, right?
Yeah, and that makes sense, so Tuesday um on the twenty-seventh, come, even if you don't wanna accept, you know, I really hyped up the committee and like that everyone's doing tasks. You don't have to, you can just come and give us your input and check out what's going on. We would love to see, your kids are welcome, they don't have to be quiet, you know, it's a free-for-all.
Wonderful.
It's very relaxed.
It's gonna be a busy thing.
Okay, we are gonna move on to action items. Linda, are you ready? So Linda, just a. Hello, so we're gonna roll call all of these and I'll, I'll roll you in first, Linda, okay? So we're gonna begin um Megan with A.
All right, uh motion to approve the minutes of the three twenty-five twenty-two-five regular session and public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-six proposed school budget.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Linda?
Aye.
Eric? Yep, oh, we know, Eric, you can approve.
You can approve this one?
Yes.
You have the minutes, but you were ready, yeah.
When I see, when I see budget, money.
Yeah, oh yeah, cause there is the.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion A passes. Go ahead, Megan.
Uh, motion to approve the school payroll dated three twenty twenty-two-five in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura, aye. Motion carries, motion C?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated three twenty twenty-two-five in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Aye.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura, aye. Motion C carries, motion D?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated three twenty twenty-two-five supplemental in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Aye.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura, aye. Motion D carries, motion E?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated four three twenty-two-five in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Laura, aye. Motion E carries, motion F?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated four three twenty-two-five in the amount of six hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Laura, aye. Motion F carries, motion G?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated four seventeen twenty-two-five in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
Aye.
Eric?
I'm staying.
Megan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Laura, aye. Motion G carries, motion H?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated four seventeen twenty-two-five in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifteen cents.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?